Hello, hello, hello everyone. Welcome, welcome, welcome to the Mary D Talk Show. I'm so glad to see you today. I know for many of you, it's what do I always say every Monday? It's a beautiful Monday. And to tell you the truth, it is another beautiful Monday. Anytime we are present, it's beautiful. Let me say that. I like to first start off this broadcast with information about a dear, dear friend. He has been very instrumental in literally everything I've been involved with when it comes to business. Many of you know the Idea Club. If you're familiar with Dumas Martin Jr., unfortunately, this past weekend, we lost Dumas. And I just recently found out and I was still, still just reeling of, I can't believe it. I just can't believe it. I know, don't think I don't know, we all have to go, but this, this man was so vital to our community, so involved and so, if you are in business, this was the man that you could go to for information, for just a shoulder to lean on. He will be, he will be dearly, dearly missed. So I will keep you posted as when I hear information about his services, so that anyone that would like to attend will be able to do so. So my condolences to the family. We're so sorry to hear about the loss of your, your wonderful father, husband. Just thank you for the gift you gave to this community. Now I want to welcome the, welcome to the show. The Idea Club is still listed as a sponsor. My hope is that someone else will be over the Idea Club, something we don't know yet who that might be. You know, also First Book Academy, those of you who are interested in writing and publishing a book, come to First Book Academy and Front Page Publishing. The academy is the, is the teaching part of Front Page Publishing. So for instance, if you have an idea about a book, you want to come into the academy, you can get the book written. If you already have the book and it's written, you want to go straight into Front Page Publishing, because that's where the publishing, the publishing arm is, is in Front Page Publishing. But those two entities are still sponsoring the show. So I like to just give you that opportunity. If you're interested in any of those things, writing and publishing, but and as many of you know, I'm still writing the script. I was working on it last night and I'm really starting to see, it takes time for everything to gel when you're writing. And this, and I can't wait to share with you when this movie is complete and you get a chance to be, you'd be the first ones to hear about it. Let me just tell you that. Also want to make sure I go over the, you know, I was trying to hold up one of my book. This is one of my books, one of the, this is, this is the first book I published as an adult, and I say as an adult or for adults. Saying No Nicely has sold more copies, if you can believe this, than any other book I published. It was number one on Amazon Bestseller List for two weeks. It has been the hottest ticket item, I guess you could say. If you look online, you will see all the stars for Saying No Nicely, because I give you tools on how you can say no nicely. And many times I've had to use them myself. So I do want to tell you that Saying No Nicely definitely can help you. If you, you, many people tell me, oh, I know how to say no. And then they, they think they know until they're in a position where they have to say no. So just if you have, you just go to Amazon and pick up your copy of Saying No Nicely. This is the current children's book is I want to share with you. This is named after Bradley, Bradley Can't Find His Pants. This is, I call all of my sons number one sons. Bradley is the third number one son, if that makes sense. He, I mean, he's the second, I'm sorry, he's the second one. Justin's the third one, but Bradley's the second child. This is the book that's named after him, Bradley Can't Find His Pants. And one last book I want to go over with you, because ladies and gentlemen, this one, which is really, I don't talk about this one much, but it came back to me as, I need to talk about this more, is Save Your Home From Probate. That if you own property, if you own, and I say property, because you can do up to four properties with this. I said up to four, I want to think it's on one, let's say you have four duplex. You can put four duplexes under this one, save your home from probate, and that way it does not go to probate. It won't, now for those of you who don't know what probate is, that is a court proceeding that can take years. And I'm not saying, I'm saying, I'm using the word years. I'm not saying one or two. I know a family that has been in court for 12 years. Now, think about that. That's 12 years of legal fees. All of this adds up, that they've been in court for 12 years behind property that they had to, you know, the person, they didn't leave a will and some, even if you do have a will, let me say this, even if you have a will, it has to go to probate. Let me say it, because most, I didn't know all this. So I've learned a lot. Even if you have a will, the will must be probated. That's why Save Your Home From Probate, you have tools in that book that can keep the property out of court altogether. No court, no judge, none of that. And some of you may know this also, it doesn't even have, you don't have to even be involved in the case. You can walk into a courtroom and say, I think what has happened with that will was fraudulent. Do you know that will stop that entire case? And they can go and be in court, like I said, for years behind one person saying things like that. So you don't want to be in that position. And the way you avoid that is to do the paperwork now. So that's why, but now we're going to get into, to have an opportunity to speak with a wonderful, when I say a wonderful man, I've actually known him, oh my goodness, let me tell, let me tell you how long I've known Jose Medina. The one I was telling you about Bradley, the one I wrote the book about Bradley, Jose Medina was Bradley's teacher at Poly High School. And Bradley is the middle son is, I think he's 40 now, just turned 41, I believe. So that's how I've known him since Bradley was in high school. And at the time, to my knowledge, politics was not in his, that I knew, that was not in his background. He was a history teacher. He was well loved by the, his, the staff at Poly High School, by the community, even then, before he ever became involved in politics. But always, I will tell you this, someone I can honestly say devoted to the community, devoted to kids, always wanted to make Riverside better. Ever since I've met Jose Medina, that, that's my take on, on Jose. But I'm gonna introduce you to him. He's an educator for Riverside County Board of Supervisors. So he is actually on, he is running for that position now, but let me give you some background. Education brought Jose Medina to Riverside, and it has been the place he has called home ever since. An educator from Harupa Unified School District Board of Education member, Riverside Community College Board trustee, and State Assembly Member, Jose dedicated his life, dedicated his life to serving others, and opening the path of opportunity for thousands, think about that ladies, thousands of high school and college students in Riverside County. And I am a witness to that, because my, to this day, my son still talks about Jose. I mean, he's, Jose is still, you, that's how much you, you have, you've affected his life. He still talks, he finally talks about you and being in his, in your class. Jose's commitment to empowering education was inspired by his father, who immigrated from Panama to pursue an American education. His father, a civil engineer, and mother, a state government Spanish translator, taught him the importance of helping others. Growing up in Southern California in the 1960s, Jose was inspired by President John F. Kennedy's call to serve, to service and the civil rights movement fight for racial justice. His family returned to Panama when the father was recruited to work for the Panama Canal Company. Jose earned an Army ROTC scholarship to attend Purdue University and moved from Panama to Indiana. On the weekends, he drove to Chicago to organize with the United Farm Workers and participate in the lettuce boycotts. Ideologically opposed to the Vietnam War, Jose resigned his scholarship and drove across country to UC Riverside, where he earned his bachelor's degree in Latin American Studies, master's degree in history, and teaching credential. Now, Jose began his 14-year teaching career at the California Institute for Women, where he advised the Latina women's group and learned the power of education in restorative justice. He taught elementary school, middle school, Spanish, ethnic and Chicano studies at Riverside Poly, Riverside Poly High School, and US History at San Bernardino Valley Community College. He served as an advisor to Metza and took part in student-led marches against Proposition 187, and the fatal police shooting of teenager Taysha Miller. The first teacher to be memorialized in Riverside Poly's Hall of Fame, Jose continues to keep personal relationships with countless students and families. Jose became active in the California Teachers Association advocating for the resources to improve education, quality and critical, and critical programs. Eager to help students beyond the classroom, he ran for public office and won a seat in the Harupa Unified School Board of Education in 1989, and then the Riverside Community College Board of Trustees in 1997. Under his leadership, Riverside City, Moreno Valley, and Norco Colleges became accredited colleges, allowing the district to grow and move, I'm sorry, to serve more students. He also helped pass a $350 million bond measure to improve the on-campus facilities, including a new library, student center, aquatic center that offers summer swimming lessons to community, community members. In 2012, Jose was elected to represent Riverside, Moreno Valley, Paris, and the Me Valley in the California State Assembly. On the first day in office, Jose introduced legislation to allow the University of California Riverside School of Medicine to begin training doctors and other medical professionals to serve the inland empire. Jose enjoys, enjoys living in Riverside with his wife Linda, and can be found connecting with community members at Zacateca's Restaurant. He has two adult children and two grandchildren. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce to you someone who is dedicated to this community and to California is Jose Medina.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you for that introduction and very happy to be here with you and with your audience this afternoon.
Thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule, Jose. I know we saw each other at the parade on Saturday. So we, I think we've been getting around in the community.
It, it was such a beautiful day, Saturday, and got to see so many longtime acquaintances. It was just great to be in the parade again, the 44th Annual Black History Parade.
I, you know, I keep, and I know the work that's involved in that, and that's with Adrian Dale and Carmen Roberts Foundation. It's impressive.
They do great work in this community and I'm happy to always be a supporter and was so pleased to be in the parade. And everything else that they do, from backpack giveaway to the women's leadership, I'm always, whatever the Dell and Carmen Roberts Foundation does, I'm there.
I know, I think I saw you at the kickoff too.
Oh yeah, I was there at the reception at Central Middle School.
Yes, we were there, I said, me and, yeah. Well, I'll tell you, this month has been very active for us. I mean, every weekend, we, it's packed, full of activities for, for Black History Month. But I just went to make sure, I, I wanted to bring you on, because I know we're, we have a lot going on this year with elections.
We do, right. March 5th is the last day to vote. It's an all mail-in election, this election, and there's local candidates and statewide candidates. And so important that everybody get out there and vote before March 5th. Turn in your ballot, mail in your ballot.
We received ours already. And we, and then Oliver and I sit down and we go, you know, we don't, and when it comes to voting, I don't think, I try not to ever miss, let me say that, because I really, really understand that somebody gave their life so I could do this.
Yeah, they, they had the saying, your, your vote is your voice and you, you need to, to express it. So very important that, that we all do our civic duty and, and turn in our ballots, so that we can get the best representation that we deserve.
I agree. I know too, and for, well, first, before we go into what you're doing, I know you have, I mean, I'm just thinking about your background, but number one, we have, our paths are very parallel, because I'm also a UC grad, UC Riverside. And that was, I'm still, I'm an alumnus and everything else. I think that the campus gave me an education I don't think I would have received anywhere else. And still connected to it. In fact, there's a UCR alumni dinner coming up that we plan to attend in a few weeks. But I know too, your, your connection to UCR is deeper than that, because you, at, at the state level, secured millions of dollars for UC Riverside.
Well, Mary, first let, yeah, you know, I'm a proud graduate of UCR, getting my bachelor's in 1974, my master's in 84, and after my bachelor, I got my teaching credential also at UCR. So yes, I, as you read, I came to Riverside to attend UCR back in 72, 73. And so when I was elected to the state legislature, to the state assembly in 2012, it was my honor to be the chair, the chair of the State Assembly Committee on Higher Education, where I stayed for about eight years as chair of the Higher Education Committee. And able, as you said, to make sure that, that UCR got the funding that it needed, to start the School of Medicine. And, and it was a, a somewhat of a fight also in the legislature to make sure that UCR got the, the regular funding that it needed. It was a little bit behind in funding from other UC campuses like UCLA and, and UC Berkeley. So it, it was an honor of my lifetime to be the chair of higher education.
Wow. Well, I know too, you're, like I said, as I was mentioning in the introduction, I first was introduced to you through Bradley. And you were Bradley's history teacher.
Yeah.
And I remember thinking, when I knew you were, were running for, you know, different offices, I, I thought, that's interesting. Because so is, I think Mark DiCanno, he was a teacher also.
That is correct, right? I know Mark was an English teacher. I, I was, like you said, a history teacher, ethnic studies teacher, Chicana studies teacher. And, and when I got to, to Sacramento back in 2012, when I was first elected, there was just a handful of former teachers in the state legislature. And at the state level, we make so many decisions that affect public education, that I think it's important that, that we have, especially at the state level, of former teachers. So I would encourage anyone who's listening and, and is a teacher now to consider, you know, to consider running for the school board, the community college, where Mark DiCanno and I both served together, or for higher office, because education is a good training.
I know, this was about two years ago, someone had asked if I would run for city council. And I was, I said, no, at this time, I didn't, just, just didn't interest me. But the more I'm around people in politics, like, you know, I mean, maybe I need to consider this.
Yeah, yeah.
But you never know, you just never know what, what the future is going to bring.
But I, I know, I know several teachers who, who are now in public office, and I think they, they do an excellent job.
Wow, that's good to know. That's good to know. I know, well, I think our city council, I, that position won't be open for like another five or six years or something like that, on the city, on, on the ward that I'm in.
Okay.
So we'll see, we'll see what the future brings. That's for sure.
Never say never.
That's true. But you were on the board of, for Harupa School District.
I, I was first elected, yes, to the Harupa School Board back in 1989. I was teaching already at Riverside Unified and my children, and, and, and we were living out there in Indian Hills. My daughter was, I think, a kinder gardener in the Harupa School District. And they had her crossing a, they wanted her to cross a busy street, a busy street out there in Harupa, Lima Night. And I said, no, we won't let her do that. So I gathered petitions, turned them into the school district. And, and with those petitions, the school district did provide transportation. So that, that was my beginning, getting elected to the Harupa School District and making sure that kids were safe, was how I started.
But you know, this is sometimes I think, you did that, there was a need, that's what you were really feeling, a need that happened. And the truth is, maybe that's, that had to happen to lead you into that, you know.
If, yeah, no, for sure. It was a street that, that I wouldn't let my daughter cross. And, and, and I think we had neighbors that felt the same way. So I, I think that's, you know, the beauty of our system, that people have the power, right, to come together, to make change, to, to be an influence. And, and that was my beginning.
Right. Well, that's wonderful. I never knew that. I never knew that. So after that, after you got the petition and you saw, and they provided a bus for the kids?
They did, they did. I said, you know, at least have a crossing guard or provide a bus. And they did provide a bus, so that the kids wouldn't have to, by themselves, cross that busy street.
But that, that street is dangerous.
Yeah, right. You know, to have first grader kindergarteners, no, I, I, I wanted to make sure that kids would be safe.
Right, right. That's wonderful. So you, now you, you worked, I mean, you were on the board for Harupa.
I was. And then I moved from Indian Hills to Riverside. And a few years after I moved to Riverside in 1997, I ran for the Riverside Community College Board and was elected, and I served there for 13 years. And the Riverside Community College Board, yeah.
Okay. Now was that, okay, you made, first of all, you left Harupa, came to Riverside, and you ran for the board. Yeah. Years, then what, what was your impetus to go to the state level?
Well, I was involved in, in party politics. Always been a lifelong Democrat, proud to be a Democrat. I'll, I'll share that my father, who you read, immigrated to this country, he, he told me one thing when I was young. He said, you are Latino, you are Catholic, and you're Democrat, and never change. And I haven't. I'm still those three things and proud of it. And so after 13 years on the RCC Board of Trustees, where we did a lot of good things for RCC, expanded to three colleges, we started the Norco and Moreno Valley into independent colleges. They got accreditation while we were there. We expanded the library, the swimming facilities. Lots of good things happened in the 13 years that I was at RCC. We passed probably the first project labor agreement, or PLA, in the area, that made sure that we had local people doing the work of, of construction at RCC. Years later, almost 20 years later, Riverside Unified passed a project labor agreement. But in those 13 years, very proud of the things that we accomplished. After that, as I was saying, I had been involved in, in, in party politics as a Democrat. And when the, the possibility came up, I actually ran for the assembly three times altogether. The first time in 2000, and then again in 2010, and then the third time successfully in 2012. But the first two times that I ran, I was actually unsuccessful.
You know, I never, I never knew that.
Yeah.
I did. I think people need to know that.
They say persistent pays off.
It does. But, but what you're saying, without a doubt, see, I thought you ran and won all the time. See, think, see what I was thinking. Yeah.
I, I wish that were true, but no. I, I lost, I lost twice for the State Assembly before getting elected in, in 2012. And, and that's not uncommon. You know, you, you mentioned our Congressman Mark DiCanno. He ran once unsuccessfully for Congress, and then I think on the second time, he was successful. And there, there are many, right, I think there are many elected officials who have the same experience as Congressman DiCanno and myself, to not have won in the first time out.
Right. I think, and I'm just gonna use Obama. He didn't win either. Every time people think he, he won, but he didn't.
Well, I remember he lost for Congress. Uh huh. Yeah, he lost a congressional seat.
Yep.
On his first time out. And then was fortunate to win in the US Senate.
Isn't that something?
But glad that, that President Obama won the presidency in his first time.
Isn't that, I think it's, like you said, persistence, and I, I really think it's not being afraid to try again, because sometimes if people lose, they're like, oh, but, but I think too, your name recognition has to get out there to the public. And then once they, they get to know you more and they get that name recognition, I think that matters.
And also you learn a lot, you know, you learn by running. And, 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 and I, and I think that there really is no, there's not a downside, yeah, you know, to, to, when people put themselves out there in, in the public, to seek public office, right, win or lose, I think you've always accomplished something and, and you've put your opinions in front of the public.
Wow, that's good.
Yeah, yeah. Again, I'd encourage young people to, to seek public office.
Okay, that's good to know, because I think you don't really hear that too often, that, you know, we encourage people to become, you know, involved in really as public service, is what you're, you're serving the public.
And as you read in my introduction, Mary, right, I, I grew up in, in those early 1960s, where we had, you know, such great national leaders, right? Whether it was John F. Kennedy, Robert Kennedy, Martin Luther King, you know, Cecil Chavez, where I think a lot of people strove or looked up to those individuals. So wanted to, to, you know, follow that path, as you say, of public service.
It really is, because I don't think people realize the time it takes too. And then it's a sacrifice, because you're sacrificing some time from your family. But they, whenever time I've seen you, I've seen Linda, so.
But in, in the, in the traveling weather, you know, like Congressman DiCanno, who has to travel to DC every week, or, or myself, who had to travel every week to Sacramento, you do have to, you know, you end up spending time away from family, and, and that is a sacrifice, for sure.
But I think you, it's a balance. I don't know, you know, I don't know. I just know, you seem to do it well. I will say that, you know.
Well, you can't do it if, if, if you are, if you have a family and you're married, you cannot do it without your spouse's support.
That's right.
You, you're not gonna have a family and, and be successful if you don't have your spouse in full support. And I'm lucky, as you mentioned, Mary, to have Linda always supporting me.
Oh, without a doubt. And we have some questions coming in, questions or comments. We have Richard Nichols, he says, he says, hello, Mary, hello, Mr. Jose Medina. So that's, that's one of our guests from the audience. And, and you know Oliver, Oliver says, hi, Mr. Medina. Thank you for joining the show and sharing your expertise in the political realm. This is going to be a great show. Thank you, Oliver. Oh, I forget, I forget to introduce you, Oliver. I did. I started talking about what happened with Dumas. I did, so. And as many of you know, Oliver's the executive producer for the show. And there's Elaine Wilson. She's an educator also. She says, hello, Mary, hello, Mr. Jose Medina. I was honored to meet Mr. Medina through Mrs. Ira Gray at our organization's Teacher's Prayer. Oh, here it is, Teacher's Prayer brush, December of 2023. That's when she said she met you.
Well, thank you to both of those for their, their comments.
Yes, I don't see any questions. I don't think, no, but I just wanted to make sure. Yes, I don't see any questions. I don't think, no, but I just wanted to make sure we addressed our audience when they when they have questions or comments. And I know too, you said, when you ran for, which I think I said, it was not encouraging to hear that you lost. I don't wanna sound like. But it's nice to hear that, because we there can be a misconception that you ran, every time you ran, you won. And then people think when they don't win, they think it's something wrong, if they don't win. The first time they try, they come out, they they are, you know, running for office, because. Now, I don't know what it is at the state level. I know you have to have so many registered voters. If you're running for city council, I think it's twenty five, if if I remember correctly. But I don't know what it is for the state to run for a state position.
Well, you're talking, Mary, about signatures, I think, uh, how many signatures you need. And if it's twenty five for the city council, the way it is for this present office that I'm running for. Um, you you can get, um, you can collect hundreds of signatures. And the each signature is worth, I don't, I forget, uh, like four cents. And it goes towards deferring how much you have to uh submit uh in your registration. It lowers uh that amount of how much candidates pay for to register to be on the ballot. So the more signatures you get, the lower that fee is.
Got it, got it. No, so there is no exact number, like it is.
No, I think there, but there is, Mary, like in the city council, I think a minimum. And the mu- the race that I'm in now of like forty, I believe, if I remember correctly. Minimum of forty and no ceiling. You can get as many signatures as as you can collect.
Okay. Well, that's something, I don't know if everybody knows that when you're running for office, even for the presidency. They have to have so many um registered voters have, you're signing the petition that you want this person to run for this position. So it's really showing that they have support um as they're running for that position. Now, I don't know what the other ones, the qualifications are for any of them. I just know city council, because I just happen to be. When uh it was one of the city councils, they were putting their votes in. And I was just happen to be in the and and I heard it. That's the only reason I even know that. And I learned something. I said, oh, I didn't know that they had to do that, so I learned something. So.
And the the rules are 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 very uh specific, right? If 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 you uh turn in, let's say that the requirement is is forty valid signatures. And by valid, I mean they're registered voters in the area that you're running in. And and you come up one short and you only have thirty nine and the requirement is forty. You're 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 out of luck and your name doesn't go on the ballot. And I know I I've heard of uh candidates that that's happened to.
Well, I would think you would wanna get over your num- that instead of being exact, just in case, was one or two. Um, years ago, I was doing voter registration. And I had so many people tell me that they were already registered. But we had on our phones, we had an app and I could look it up. And I would tell you literally nine out of ten people that said that were not registered.
Yeah, no, very true. So yes, I I would always get more than, lots more than the minimum requirement.
And see, that can tell you why you where you.
Make sure that I qualify.
You said you are not gonna make that the reason you don't qualify.
Exactly, exactly. You don't want any surprises.
That's true. Well, you are now in a, this is another race now. This is different and uh you're at the state level. At this, as an assembly member. And now you're at a local level, which ma- which means you don't have, you're you're uh, you're running for uh the position for a supervisor. But what that does, you don't have to fly back and forth to Sacramento.
Right, which I did for ten years, correct?
Yeah, but it's really just dri- it would be driving to an office locally as opposed.
The the county building right here in Riverside, no more than ten minutes away from my house.
Yes. And this one, now, I I think, um, if I understand it correctly, there's there's a total of four candidates for this position. Now, isn't this um the two, the two candidates that receive the most votes are the ones that will be on the ballot in November?
Yes, um, this is the primary. And if no one candidate receives fifty percent plus one.
Right.
Percent of the vote, uh, the top two candidates move to the November election. That's correct.
Okay, okay. Well, I know, um, we definitely, um, you know, we we want a good. Outcome as far as voters for you, we definitely, my husband and I are are supporting you. So, um.
Thank you.
We wish you well with with uh with as you're running for this position. I know. Uh, no doubt, you'll do great things there. You have, in every position you have been. You have made sure that Riverside is going to be on the map. And will be well taken care of with you in that position. So.
Thank you very much, Mary.
So we are going, I know too, you're, you have been um working, I know. Around the, let's say, around the globe. This is a universal issue that we all dealing with, and that is homelessness. What I'm your, when in your, and we know there's, I I I don't wanna say there's a cure for this. I think this is something. Cause I remember growing up, this was not something we I ever dealt with growing up. It wasn't, it didn't even exist when I was growing up. So now to see it as being part of our society, um, I don't know that there's an answer to it. I think there's a reduction. I don't know that there's an a to- an overall answer to homelessness. If there were, people would would do it. But how are we going to, and I'll get your opinion on it, or as we go forward, reduce it?
Right. Well, um, first, you know, I thank you for that question. It is something that I and I'm sure every other person running for office uh at this time. Whether it's city council or state legislature. Or or like myself, running for county supervisor, gets. Because it definitely is a concern, as it should be. Uh, it's on the minds of 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 people. And and we we hear from them uh quite a bit. And as you said, homelessness, um, unfortunately. Uh, I I saw it when I was in Sacramento. I I saw it on my way from where I live to go to work in the capital. I see it here in Riverside.
Yeah.
There, I'm driving on University Avenue, or I'm in downtown, right? I I see uh homeless. And as you said, it's a very complicated issue. Uh, and there are so many different factors that affect it. Uh, from mental health to drug addiction. Uh, to even, I would say, you know, the price of houses and like the high rents. And the availability of housing, all those are things that to go into uh homelessness. How do we, how do we, and I again, I don't wanna say solve, because I don't know that that that. It'll be quote unquote solved, but how do we, like you asked the question, reduce it? And and I think that uh what is needed, uh what continue, needs to continue. Is that uh levels, different levels of government, the city, county. The state need to work together to address it. Some from the state, it goes towards the county, some of it goes to the cities. We have to bring in uh the nonprofits, law enforcement. And I think the 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 places that do the best job, and some of those I've seen in Long Beach. Uh, you know, have teams going out on the street. To bring in, like I would be would say, maybe city officials.
Right.
People from law enforcement, not necessarily does it have to be uh the police, but but somebody like that. Um, and the nonprofits together to be out on the streets to directly talk to individuals. And uh and to figure out, you know, why are they there? Hopefully, there would be enough uh shelters in place.
Mm hmm.
Psychiatric uh beds, as they say, uh for individuals or shelters. For them to be able to get off the street. And uh and something new that we have here in Riverside County. Riverside County is one of only seven counties throughout the state to implement what is called the Care Court. Which gives individuals uh the ability to bring someone home. Uh, that that is really being harmed by living out on the streets. And and I would um bring up my good friend, Dr. Gary McGuire. Who I worked with very closely. Dr. McGuire was the dean or the chair rather of psychiatry at UCR. And he said, uh, like I think the governor Newsom believed. That we don't do anyone any favor uh by letting them live on the street without any medical assistance. Or mental health assistance. So the Care Court is a a move in that direction. Tried to give the the uh mental health care that some of the people or a lot of the people. On the street, living uh in homelessness need. And move them to uh more uh safe environments for their own good.
Well, we have, thank you, and we have some questions from our audience. One is from Dr. Janet Long, and she says, hello, Mary and Jose. So glad to see you again. Jose, what do you hope to accomplish if you win this the race for supervisor?
All right. Well, thank you, uh, Dr. Long for that question. Um, you know, I I I want to build upon the successes that I've had in the State Assembly in the ten years I was there. Uh, certainly, I'm uh interested in uh in jobs in education. Uh, as as an educator for thirty four years, as a trustee, uh, as a a teacher. You know, I know how important education is to our area. And one of the things that I learned in going to Sacramento is that unfortunately, our college going rate is not as high. As other parts of the state of California. We have some of the lowest um percentage of of of. Young people completing uh four-year degrees. So I would continue to work with 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 all the segments of education. From K twelve to the com- the co- community colleges, to the four-year colleges, to make sure that we go in that direction. So that we can attract businesses that we need so much here in our area. That would uh give people, uh individuals, um, you know, high-paying wages. So that we don't have to rely on just a warehouse jobs. Uh, for for our young people and graduates of of the high schools. I would encourage the county to do more, to make uh the apprenticeship programs. Uh, known to to young people, to high school students. I think, you know, I talked about the importance of college. College isn't for everyone. And there has to be, as they say, a path to the middle class. Uh, for individuals uh like my own son, who didn't go to college. But, you know, wants to pursue something that uh that 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 pays very good wages. And those would be uh things like um apprenticeship programs within the trades. Whether it be welding or carpentry or electrical workers. I think we can do a better job on that. And then, and then, you know, health, mental health, I talked about. Um, and the importance of both of those. And 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 in and in public health. I I think, you know, we 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 started with the medical school. We addressed a number of doctors and the shortage of doctors. But we need to make sure that we have hospitals that are just as good as the hospitals in uh LA and Orange County. And that would be something that I would certainly look at. How do we i- improve our hospitals here? So those are a few of the things that I'd like to work on at supervisor.
Okay, cause we have a comment from Elaine Wilson is similar, I believe. She says, she's not a Riverside um resident. City or county resident, but she wanted to talk about, to talk with her family about that, about you. She says, speak, please speak about the things you wanna achieve, and I think you did speak to that. But I wanted to make sure she got her comment in also about um as supervisor. And we have Antonio Human, he says hello. Then he says, uh, she, he's a little late, but that's okay, Antonio. Then we have Charles, he said hello, um, to, I think you you met Mary and guess. That's, and I would tell you, um, I'm listening to you, Jose, but like you said, with um as supervisor. Because I don't think people understand uh how powerful supervisors' positions are. And how they can direct funding for Riverside or for whatever the county they are that they live in. Um, that it it is really, I mean, it's bill, it's million, I'll say millions or billions of dollars that they are. That they have control over for the county.
Right. And you know, we are one of the biggest counties in the in the in the nation. I think we're the seventh biggest county in the nation. Um, and certainly the role of the county, uh, and 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 things like public health, public safety. Uh, are is huge.
Right. And I know, like you said, with the medical center, um, coming to, I mean, that's this huge for Riverside to have that. Cause you see, when I was there, we didn't have that. It didn't exist. So it's it's good that that's part of it. But you also have been instrumental in the Oversight Committee for um the Sheriff's Department.
Well, yeah, as you say, Mary, I've been uh very vocal uh while I was in Sacramento. Um, legislation was passed that gives the County Board of Supervisors uh the ability or the power. To create oversight uh on the Sheriff's Department. Uh, many counties like Los Angeles, San Diego have used that power of the legislation to do that. To create a citizens oversight uh board that oversees the actions of the Sheriff's Department.
Right.
Very similar to what we have here in Riverside with a citizens uh overview board. Of the Riverside uh Police Department. Something that that grew out of the Taisha Miller shooting.
Correct.
And I know that uh our our um, our police chief Larry Gonzalez. Is very supportive of that. And I think that we have certainly a lot more trust. Given now that we have oversight, civilian oversight.
Right.
Riverside Police Department, and that that same trust that folks have in the Riverside Police Department. Would be increased if we had such a uh a board overseeing the Riverside Sheriff's Department. Where we have seen uh for the past two years, so many deaths in our county jails.
Yeah.
And uh of problems with drugs coming into the jails. And and uh the the Sheriff's Department right now is being investigated uh by the Attorney General's Office. Um, for for the number of deaths that have happened within our jails. And I've been very vocal. I've gone to uh the uh County Board of Supervisors and and I have. Would join other people uh at the meetings, imploring them to to do what is right. To to do what we uh elect our elected officials for. And to make sure that the Sheriff's Department has oversight, citizens oversight. And separate the office of the coroner from the office of the sheriff as well.
So the county supervisors, they have the authority to do this, or they?
They have the authority to create that. And that authority came du- because of legislation. Uh, because of a bill passed introduced by uh Kevin McCarty, a bill that I supported. Uh, while I was in Sacramento. And and yes, it is that, um, that legislation. That gives the power to the uh Board of Supervisors to do it on them on their own. And 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 if that were not to happen, it also goes beyond that and say, you know, that the people, the people themselves. Could also do it uh with a vote.
So why wouldn't the county want to do, why would the, okay, they have the authority to do it. They've had it for two years, correct?
I believe that is correct. So why wouldn't they? Well, I think sometimes they say you have to follow the money. And uh, and one of the things that I have pointed out is that the Riverside Sheriff's Association.
Mm hmm.
Is a big donor to folks who sit on the Riverside County Board of Supervisors. They donate to their campaigns. And uh sometimes that'll um slow down. Excuse me, support for something like oversight.
Okay, so they, there's, there hasn't been any movement as far as creating that committee?
No, there has not.
I wonder, like you said, follow the money as to why there hasn't. So no, but at the same time. It looked like to me, I see things come across my phone almost weekly that somebody's dying in our jails.
Well, there, I think the number. Has been somewhere between nine and, and twelve deaths in the, in the past year or two.
Wow. And there's no accountability for that?
Well, the, as I pointed out, as it is right now, the people who do the investigating is the coroner's office. But there is no separation between the coroner's office and the sheriff's department themselves. So it's like the sheriff investigating themselves. And that is why I and others are calling for a separation between the coroner's office and the sheriff's office.
And how does, what, only the supervisors can make that separation between those two?
Yes, that, that power lies within the board of supervisors. And as a matter of fact, Riverside County operated that way. I, I, I remember when the two offices were separated. I don't know how many years we have to go back, but at one time, the offices were separated as they should be.
Right. Well, it's just, my parents would say, it's the fox guarding the hen house.
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree with that. I think it's, it's not working. And I have been forceful in, in, in presenting that to the board of supervisors. I wrote an editorial in the, in the Press Enterprise that was published, saying the same thing. And I'm very proud of having the endorsement of the Press Enterprise for my race. For the Riverside County Board of Supervisors because of that.
Right, because you're standing for what's right. That's really what it is. It's like, these, the people are in. They're in custody, which means they no longer have really authority over anything, much less, much less themselves. But the county is taking responsibility for them. And the one thing, they should not have to fear that they're going to live through that.
And, and the other thing too, Mary, is that the county is facing very many lawsuits. As well, after, after these deaths. I, I think there was something recent in Los Angeles where the, the payment was in the millions of dollars. Of having to settle lawsuits. And, and here in Riverside County. The same could be true, that the number of lawsuits and, and the impact that that has financially on the county. Is certainly not something that, that I want to see.
Is there an Oversight Committee, do you know, for LA County?
Yes, I, I, I am pretty sure that LA County does have overview in their sheriff's department. As does San Diego County.
So Orange County does also, so we're the county that doesn't?
We are among few of the counties that do not, correct?
San Bernardino does, or it doesn't?
I, I'm not sure about them, Mary.
Okay, and I'm just asking because we're the one, to me, it's like we're surrounded by counties that have this. And do they have the same number of deaths in their jails, or they don't?
No, I would say that Riverside. Given the population that we have, is, is seeing much higher. You know, percentage of deaths, if that makes sense, I'm saying it, right? Given the smaller population, higher number of deaths. So I, I think that is what, one of the reasons that prompted the investigation by the Attorney General's Office. To our sheriff's department.
Charles Radney is saying that we're the seventh biggest county in population or square miles.
Correct, in the, in the United States.
Wow, that's big. I know, relation wise, it's weird, I mean, and, and we're growing. That's because I, from what my understanding, because our housing, the cost for housing is lower than Orange County, LA County, or San Diego County. So it's pushed people into inland empire to, for affordable housing.
I have certainly seen the growth in population in the fifty years that I've lived in, in Riverside.
Same here. It's, I remember when I, I first came, it was, they call it a one-horse town or something like that. It was, I, I came in seventy-four, so that's when I, and I'm a transfer student. I started at the community college and transferred to UC Riverside. And that's how I, I first came. I never came to stay, and now I've been here about fifty years.
Well, we came at around the same time, Mary. And for the same reason.
And it's, it's been, I was, it is home now, no doubt. This is definitely home. Well, I wanted to tell you, I know we're getting close to the end of the show, so I did want to make sure. To thank you again, Jose, because I know you, you also, I almost forgot to put up the number. If you would like to volunteer, ladies and gentlemen, he is seeking volunteers. If you are, if you would be interested in working on the campaign. They're down to a few days, but I'm, I feel very confident that if there's a runoff, Jose's name. Name will be there as one of the people, one of the candidates for the runoff. And so I'm going to put the volunteer number. If you're interested, it's area code nine five one, I'll say it, if I'm putting in six four five.
Mary, nine oh nine.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. You know, automatically put nine five one. Sorry about that. I'm glad you made that correction. Nine oh nine, there we go. And then six four five thirty-five sixty-seven.
That's it.
So I'm going to put that up if anyone is interested in volunteering. Let me put that, here we go. There you go. There's about the number you can call if you're interested in volunteering. But I'd like to thank you. I know some of the things we're talking about today. It's gonna take, I'll be honest, it's years to see the results. But as we've talked earlier about patience and resilience, that's really what I think it takes in whatever we're doing. It, it is, none of this is going to be taken care of overnight. It's not an overnight thing. But I'm, I'm very interested to, about the Citizens Committee for the Sheriff's Department. Because I think that's an area that we need to, to look at, I guess you could say. So that would mean, I'm, I'm assuming talking to our current supervisors as to why hasn't that committee been created?
That's correct, Mary.
Okay, all righty. Well, that's definitely something to consider, for sure, for sure. So, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming into today's show. I think, I don't want it to, last week, the show at exactly two o'clock, it went down, it, it cut off. So I don't want that to happen this week. So again, thank you for your time. I do appreciate you coming on the show. And good luck, not only this, as we're going through the primaries, but in the, in November also.
Thank you, Mary. Thanks for having me.
You're welcome, you're welcome. So ladies and gentlemen, that is our show for today. I'd like to thank each and every one of you for coming on the show and for being here. As you could hear, that there's a need. There's a volunteer opportunity for those of you that like to volunteer. But there's also saying, there's Riverside County Sheriff's, or they have an Oversight Committee for the Riverside County Sheriff's. I have seen in the last, I'm going to say six months, at least four that I can recall. Come across my phone that said, this person died while they were in custody. This person died. Something is going on. I don't know what. I can't say what it is because I don't know. But that's something that we definitely need to look into. So thank you all for being here today. I really do appreciate you. We will be back next week. We actually have an author that's going to be on the show next week. But thank you again. God bless each and every one of you. Bye, everybody.